We don't want so much money.
Like this time of year, my boss is always on vacation, so we can have some. So that is just how much more for me to do.
I don't buy it early.
Okay, it's six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming, everybody. Now, we'll make some additions, additions, corrections. Anything? Do you have, Dan?
I do not have anything.
Wait.
Nope.
Ryan, no. Okay, I've got a couple. So, under L, Attorney's Report, we're gonna add a closed session for a heaser litigation update. Under six correspondence, which everybody has on the table in front of them, is that letter that we authorized last time to the Minnesota Housing Finance Authority. A letter of support for the Sands Company on the Minnesota Housing Tax Cut Program. So that'll be on their correspondence, number six. And on the Mayor's Report, we're gonna discuss the next council meeting on July 28th, so. Be adding those. Anything else, Linda, that I missed there?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Everything was in your packet. Any questions on that?
I identified one typo to Laura, uh, to Linda. This person. Regarding the last minutes, the complimentary minutes, so other than that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second pass.
Thanks, Ryan. Do we have all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Visitors of the councils, we'll have Joe and Brian from Southeast Minnesota League of Municipalities Computer Transportation Presentation. You guys are up.
Good evening, Councilors. Oh, we're getting a clicker as well. Good evening, I'm Brian Carlson, um, on behalf of the Southeast Minnesota Together Organization.
I'm Joe Jacobson, also with Southeast Minnesota Together, representing.
Appreciate an opportunity to give you an update with regard to regional transportation planning. And as Mr. Egler had shared with you, um, probably a couple of months ago now, there had been some action on the part of Southeast Minnesota League of Municipalities to help us organize an effort and encourage us to be able to bring some of this information forward to communities across the Southeast Minnesota region. So, this evening, and I'm gonna look, see if I can get that into presentation mode here. It might look a little better. There we go. Uh, this evening, we want to talk about Southeast Minnesota Regional Transportation Planning. Again, Mr. Jacobson and I are here on behalf of Southeast Minnesota Together and Grassroots Economic Development and Vitality Organization that was begun quite a number of years ago. And Nancy Zaworski is on the board of the Southeast Minnesota Together and has been for many years, I think. I don't know that I could quote how long that's been, so. There we go. We're gonna go that way. By way of a couple of visuals, Southeast Minnesota Together had been given some initial funding from Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund. And back in 2015, the intent was to be able to get an organization together primarily aimed at talking about issues that were of importance to the Southeast Minnesota corner. And some of the issues that we talked about in the format of logos or icons are housing, including workforce housing. We also talked about workforce. We talked about transportation issues, and we also talked about collaboration. And one of the things that we were focused on are what are the issues that affect Southeast Minnesota? And things that we can accomplish to help Southeast Minnesota work together more effectively and advance the vitality of the region. To that end, we had a number of us, Mr. Jacobson and myself, and a handful of others that have been looking at transportation-related issues for Southeast Minnesota since back in 2015. In 2018, we put in a request for a grant from MINDOT, and it was a sponsored study looking at regional transportation coordinating councils. Some of you may have recalled some of that information. I know I've spoken with some of you in previous Southeast League of Municipalities meetings and other communities around the area as well. And the Regional Transportation Coordinating Council Study was primarily focused on transportation needs for health and human services types of clients. It was a region-wide effort, so we're talking 11 counties in Southeast Minnesota. And one of the things we found out in that process was that clearly, across Southeast Minnesota, the communities resoundingly indicated we absolutely need to have help and a coordinated effort with regard to transportation services, especially as it relates to health and human services needs. No surprise to you, as a matter of fact, one of your neighbors, CMCAC, is a provider of that kind of transportation service, primarily for health and human services clients that you have across the region. I think they're right on the backside here, if I recall correctly. And there are others across the region that do the same thing as well. But one of the other things that we heard when we spoke with communities across the region is that we need transportation services not only for health and human services needs, but we also need it for employers in our cities. We need it for educational purposes, and we need it for tourism and hospitality. And we need to figure out how we can establish transportation services across the region in a more effective manner. This is the region of study. It's 11 counties of Southeast Minnesota. It's primarily from Interstate 35 on the west, all the way over to the river, Goodhue County on the north, and the Iowa border on the south. So the areas that we looked at encompassed 11 counties. How many municipalities do we have in the Southeast?
Eighty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Egler. As a part of Southeast League of Municipalities, that organization works with almost all of the communities and municipalities in the area. During that process, when we were completing the MINDOT study, we heard a lot from a lot of different communities, and resoundingly, economic vitality and support for the employers in their cities was a primary concern. And then the pandemic came, and a lot of things changed. In 2020, a lot of people said, wait a second, I don't need to go into the office, I can work from home. Not everybody, however, but there was significant reduction in that need for commuting for a lot of folks. And as a matter of fact, in that process, the commuter bus service, transit service, that had been operating in Southeast Minnesota was discontinued. Many of you are aware, there's a very significant parking ride facility right on the south side of town, and that thing was maybe not full all the time, but very heavily used. As a matter of fact, one of the stops that that provider service from Rochester City Lines, excuse me, one of the stops that they had was right down there on the highway. A lot of folks got on those buses in the morning and in the afternoon when they came back home. The issue there is, that was early 2020, where are we now? Well, we are moving forward. What are the needs that are going on? We know that the economy is rebounding, thankfully, some places faster than others. But there's also a need for employees to be able to support our local employers, and there's a need for transportation. So that's what's driving our discussion tonight about where do we go and how do we still deal with this situation? We know that local employers are still trying to expand and grow. The demand is strong. For goodness sake, we can't even find a car on a lot unless you wanna pay a significant premium for it. But that need, especially in the manufacturing sector, transcends not only the auto industry, but all kinds of other manufacturing that we've got right here in Southeast Minnesota. Employees still need to travel to get to work. Perhaps there are not as many in the healthcare field that are working in downtown Rochester, but there's still a lot of people coming in and out of Rochester. As a matter of fact, there's a lot of people coming in and out of Casson, in Dodge County, and Steel County, and Fillmore, and Freeborn, and Goodhue. And I'll show you a couple of those numbers. That's what we're really trying to get at is students are returning to school, people are going back to work, hospitality is starting to pick up again. So how do we gauge this, and where do we go? Well, we reached out to DEED, Department of Employment and Economic Development, and we asked them to help us understand how many people are moving around. And although these numbers came from pre-pandemic levels, we know that they're reduced from this right now, but they're going to be going back up. So one of the things that we found, there's a couple of slides that we got pulled together. These are inflow and outflow numbers for counties and cities in Southeast Minnesota. So what you're seeing on the left-hand side of the screen is that 3,500 people come into Dodge County every day to work, and 8,000 people leave Dodge County every day to go to work. And there's 3,000 people that work just within the county. They live in the county, and they stay within the county. DEED was able to break that down by cities. Casson has almost 1,000 people that come into Casson every day to work, and there's 3,000 people that leave Casson every day to work. And there's about 380 that stay right, that live in Casson and stay right in Casson to work every day. Dodge Center, very similar kind of situation. More people come into Dodge Center and work than leave. But I'm not going to read every single number, but if we look at all of the counties in Southeast Minnesota and similar cities, the message is still the same. Steel County has 9,600 people that come into the county every day, 7,000 people go out of the county every day to work. By cities, Owatonna and Medford are the same. Rice County, 11,000 people come in, 18,000 people leave Rice County every day. Maybe a lot of them are headed up to the cities. We are not necessarily dissecting the information to that degree. But we do know that these are representative of, whoops, I think I lost my click here. There we go. These are representative of the numbers of folks that move around throughout the region. Goodhue County, very similar numbers. 14,000 people leave. Ensted County, big numbers. 33,000 people come into Ensted County every day, 18,000 people leave Ensted County every day to work. And no surprise, when we look at some of the city numbers, Rochester has 40,000 people that come into Rochester every day to work. And 15,000 people leave Rochester every day to work. The issue here is that there's a lot of people moving around without the fact of having a transit service available. What that translates to is those people go back on the roads. There may be some car sharing, there may be some other commuter assistance that people are kinda cobbling together, but the issue here is that all of those folks have gotten back on the roads and are traveling because there is no bus service available. 2021, there are federal stimulus funds that are available. As you're certainly aware, the City of Casson is receiving funds. And like any other city across the state, across the United States, this is a wonderful time to be able to access funds that you had not intended to receive and apply them to projects that are of high priority. Mr. Jacobson and I are here on a part, on behalf of Southeast Minnesota Together, to request that you allocate a small portion of those funds that you've received to help us organize a regional transportation planning organization for Southeast Minnesota. So what we're asking for specifically is $2.50 per capita for an organizational setup or organizational planning, which will allow us to be able to access sustainable funding through federal sources. So the request that we have is primarily to be able to indicate and set up who the organization will be. The intent that we have is that there is an expectation to be able to set up a transit management organization to deal with transit planning for the southeast counties, for the 11 southeast counties. And I think I've got two more in here, and then we'll certainly be able to take some questions if you have that as well. What also is included in the jump drive that I have provided to you as well, in addition to these slides, there's a sample resolution from the Southeast Minnesota League of Municipalities. So should you choose to move forward in offering up a resolution to the council at a following meeting, here's a sample resolution that indicates the City of Casson's support for this effort and indicates your plan to be able to allocate some funds to be able to help us study this. So there's a couple of questions. Where are we right now? The question is, MINDOT was providing some study a couple of years ago. We went through that process, and we were able to identify how the MINDOT focus is going to work for providing a coordinated effort for transportation planning, again, primarily for health and human services needs, but there's a much larger need that is out there, which is economic development-driven. So that's for our employers and, quite frankly, our residents that we have in each of the communities. The questions that are on the table right now are, who's going to lead this organization? If we were able to set up a transit management organization for Southeast Minnesota, who's going to be a part of that? We would welcome your assistance and your guidance and participation, and perhaps a representative to be on that organization for the transit management organization as well. We need to figure out what the plan will be for a pilot project, to be able to determine how, what does this organization look like? How will the planning go forward? And how can we access some of the federal funds that would allow us to establish sustainable funding for a long-term transportation management organization for the counties? Funding sources from the federal side, and look for the long-term plan. Does that involve capability to set up a transportation system that works similar to Metro Transit in Minneapolis-St. Paul? Or does it look something more like some of the other examples that we have from other locations across the United States? Rural Oregon, rural Washington State, rural Nevada, of which there are many that look very similar to that need that we have for rural Minnesota in Southeast Minnesota. So those are the questions that are up on the table. And I'm gonna pause for a second and see if Mr. Jacobson would like to add in some comments as well.
Yeah, let's open it up to some questions, but as Brian put very, very well, him and I are volunteering right now, and for this to go forward, we really need some type of transportation management organization to pick this up and bring it forward and be it sustainable in the long-term goal and future of this project. And Brian actually works for SEH full-time. I work for Rochester City Lines. And there's lots of questions that go back and forth of what it was and what it could be. The nice part about building this new foundation is it's open. It's not centric to one employer. It's really about how can we move people, how can we, for tourism, for, you know, I live in Stewartville. I grew up in Grand Meadow. I'm a small-town person, and people choose small towns for a reason, but they still like to have the capability of having transit available for them and their spouses and children. And, you know, we talk about schools, and we're just looking at this with no boundaries, no lines in the sand of a county or a state or whatever it happens to be. So we just wanna let people know this is the best way to actually start it because there's no preconceived notions of what this is gonna look like. So we'll open it up for questions.
Questions, anybody? Comments?
I mean, I guess I, I mean, I think it's definitely a need just from personal experience with folks that we have here in town who... One gentleman that rents from us and one of our apartments works for Opportunity Services, he can't drive. So when they finally start letting them back to work, he has zero way to get there. You know, so there's definitely more than just him. There's probably a dozen or 18 that live in town here that took that bus every day to Rochester to get to a job of some kind. So there's definitely a need for moving people that have no other way to do it.
And like I said before in a different meeting, this is gonna impact the whole Southeast Minnesota. There's more, it's even a safety issue because there's gonna be a bus going down the road instead of 2,000 cars, you know? I mean, you gotta look at it, like I said before, kind of a big picture. It's gonna help a lot more people than you even realize, just like Chris said there. He knows of one right away. And there's, how many people took it with the parking ride was always full. And every winter, you're gonna get more people to use it, obviously, just because it's a...
Yeah, it fits, just from the City of Casson's perspective, it fits with our housing plan as far as, you know, if the Sands Company thing goes through, that's 45 units right away and possibly another 90 over the next year or two after that. And that's folks in the affordable housing, or whatever you'd like to call it, that may enjoy that transportation as well, which makes the apartment or wherever it is more affordable if they have transportation available.
And believe it or not, professionals used our service in the past, pre-pandemic. We were probably bringing in 1,500 people a day and out 1,500 people.
If you look at it too, some of those families can now afford to run an apartment because they might only need one car or no cars.
I'll add a comment in there. And you made a very good point. The issue here is, as we had learned from our discussions with Southeast Minnesota Together, is that there's an interesting nexus between housing, especially workforce housing, workforce development, and that transportation need. And as we're all aware, we've got residents in our communities that perhaps they have one car, perhaps they have zero cars. But our intent, especially in the workforce housing arena, is to be able to provide them a safe and comfortable place to live and be able to provide them opportunities to be able to work. That self-sufficiency on their part is a key part of really what it is that they're trying to do. And that transportation component of it, although perhaps to many of us who have the luxury of being able to drive wherever we need, is not always the case with everyone. So our desire is to be able to provide some type of assistance that quite bluntly doesn't fully fall on the responsibility of the city, but it allows us to be able to access federal funds, which quite frankly are paid for by all of us in this room. And those are the funds that we want to be able to access and utilize, no differently than what it is that you're doing right now with funds that come available for the city as well. So that's the part that we're really trying to aim for, is utilize the resources that are available to us through the efforts of legislative effort or legislative legislators that we have in Washington DC, as well as our support that we've got regionally as well.
So I do have another question. When, if this goes forward like the ultimate goal is, are, will you be able to get funding to help cities get parking rides that don't have them? To make it so people have a place to get out instead of parking downtown or...
Yes, that's part of the goal, and actually, there are funds that have been used for that. I know Ensted County had some funds set aside just for parking rides, and we have worked with MINDOT on many of those things. And it's funny, you know, you might talk to one commissioner, and they're thinking, I don't want a parking ride on the side of town. I want it where businesses are so they grow from that parking ride. So it can differ from town to town on what that need might be and where people don't have to walk to get to certain services. One other thing I'd like to bring up is we are trying to work with a MINDOT parallel on this project. So, you know, we're very transparent in everything we're doing right now. And MINDOT has another project. It's a $14 million project called MAS. It's M-A-A-S. It's a mobility app service that allows all public and private sectors to put GIS information into this system. And no matter who I am, I can say I wanna go from here to here, and it's gonna give you all them options instead of having to know I need to call this one, or I need to call this one. This is a fixed route. This is a call for service. This is, I need to take a bike from here to here. I need to walk from here to here. I need to take a train from here. Whatever the case may be, it's gonna put all those, and it's for Southern Minnesota. So it's very nice to be part of those projects as we go forward on all of this.
Can you mention collaboration between bus, walk, Uber, Lyft, volunteer drivers?
Yeah, so Brian was just talking about all the different collaboration that we're having between all the different services out there right now. For instance, we saw a video the other day that the University of Minnesota sent us on some of the work they're doing, but it literally had federal dollars going to a private, let's say it was a small community in rural United States, and they really couldn't justify getting a bus. They couldn't justify those types of things. But instead of this person calling an Uber, actually, the system would do that for them, and then them federal dollars, that 70% of the fare usually. Like when you take a bus on a federal compensated bus, 70% usually comes from the feds and local and other city matches type thing, and then 30% comes from the person actually taking the vehicle or using the service. So the nice part about this is, in that example of what they did in rural America, is they actually used those federal dollars to help fund me taking somebody in my car to a doctor's appointment. So it wasn't just about health and human services, but it was actually just about movement of people and trying to help in other ways. So the nice part about all this, as I said in the beginning, is just an open slate to say, how can we do this? How can we get everybody involved so we can have very good input? And, you know, everything from Northfield, Red Wing, to down the river, you know, Preston, everywhere else. I mean, even talking with Preston the other day, it was all about housing. I mean, they planned their housing division based on transportation that was there and now is not.
Now, all of what you have presented is, so far, is providing opportunities for various transportation modes. Is the intent for some of this money to also go into lobbying efforts to leverage?
Yeah, and we'd probably be hiring somebody like a Kimley Horn, which we did in the first phase of the plan when we did the district or the Regional Transportation Coordinating Council. That's a lot to say. We searched out to bring in more professionals for that service, and that same thing came up, yes. So lobbying, and we're talking with private industries also. And they're very willing to put up some funds to help start a TMO because they know how important it is to their workforce. So, and they have, a lot of those people have those connections. Not saying we don't in some of that lobbying side of it, but, you know, we'll meet with Senator Smith, you know, Bree Mackin or something like that, or the other senators and congressmen and things like that to bring it forward. But we're not the ones that really know how to do that. So that's where we bring in those professionals, and they do that work for us. Because there's no way, two guys, it's down the way it is right now. We're starting the ball rolling and gonna hand it off.
Good idea. Any mayouts, everybody?
How many cities have you gone to and percentage-wise roughly have said yes to this?
We have been to Wabashaw, and that is the first one, and you are the second.
So right now, we're at 100%.
Actually, I guess I'll make a comment about that. One of the things that Mr. Egler had encouraged us to do was to be able to bring this to you so that you can think about that and understand that not only what would that mean for the City of Casson, but through the Southeast League of Municipalities, we were encouraged on the part of the executive director to bring this more broadly to communities across the region. So as the organization of all of the municipalities in Southeast Minnesota, the SEMLM group felt this is important enough for us that we would, A, like to be able to stand behind us, create that sample resolution that the city could use if they choose to go forward, but quite frankly, open up the doors to say if you would, if a city would appreciate it or would be able to welcome a short presentation on this, we would like to be able to support and encourage that as well. So that's why we're here right now. I should also mention that this same message will be shared with each of the counties in Southeast Minnesota. So understand that we are asking the counties for the same thing, for a commitment of $2.50 per capita. It's a significantly different request when we get to some of the other larger or populous counties, certainly Ensted County. Very strong interest. We do not yet have their commitment, but we've got very strong interest on the part of the commissioners. We have not yet approached Dodge County, but we'll be doing so at some point as well. But that's our intent at this point, is to try to find out how can we share this more broadly with the folks across the region so that we can start this process and make that happen.
That $2.50 is going to be the same no matter where you go? That number seems...
That is correct, yes. We appreciate your time. Thank you. If there are any other additional questions, Mr. Jacobson and I can be found at emails and phones that are posted here as well. And I, let's see, I know we got a copy of these slides that I think may have...
I don't have a copy of the slides.
That have run into the packet, okay? And what I have not sent in that original packet was that sample resolution, but that's on the jump drive. And do you want me just, I can just email it to you in the morning for future reference?
I've got it in my package. The sample resolutions in this...
Oh, do you?
Or did we get it in?
Yep.
They were on your slide.
Oh, yeah.
But not a complete.
Yeah, what's on the slide is just a little snippet of the top of the page.
All right, all right.
So, but the meat of that resolution is, was created by Brenda Johnson at SEMLM, so.
Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and sharing that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll get that added on to a future meeting for discussion then, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it forward tonight just so you guys had more information, and they can present... and they can present it better than I could.
Okay. Perfect. All right. We'll move on to the mayor's report, and then we'll do public forum. And if anybody's here for public forum for input, if you could fill out one of the cards where you first came in, just for our public record, perfect. Thank you. We'll get to that in just a minute. Yep. Thank you. So mayor's report. The only thing I want to talk about tonight is our July 28th meeting, the second meeting for July. We've got some folks that are going to be gone as far as staff, and we've kind of worked to get some stuff pulled up to this meeting. So we don't really have anything as far as planning zoning EDA that would be coming up. And I think we also have a council person or two that may also be, have some conflicts. Yeah. So we've got at least two. So I'm looking at possibly canceling that second meeting in July, the July 28th meeting. So I'll just looking for input on that or questions or?
I'm fine with that. If there's nothing pressing and if something comes up that needs to be solved-
We can always call a special meeting if we have to.
Yeah. That's exactly it. But.
I'll be in Arizona, but if Ken, you know, do a little festival if necessary.
Okay.
So I guess I would make a motion that we could cancel the July 20th meeting.
Okay. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor today?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So our next meeting will be August 11th, I believe?
Correct.
Yep. Okay. All right. So on to public forum. If you have one of the cards, if you could get me that, and then just come up to the podium and state your name and address and?
Thank you. I parked in the front and suddenly remembered I was too bad. I'm Victoria Liski, and I need to-
Just take it. Yep. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Well, welcome. My name is Victoria Liski. My husband, Robert, and I have recently purchased a home in the Houston's addition. And I will tell you that I have never come into a city and been so welcomed by just calling and saying, "I have to set up my utilities." And so Kathy is not, I don't know that she attends. Is that the staff person that really gives you the up and the down? And so I get my account set up and call, and I also get a great letter that says, "Wow, you've spent a lot of water on your meter." And I've kind of was encouraged, "You may come and share and give your billing. We have managed to get new sods sooner than I thought Bigelow's could provide for us." And so I've been watering, and I think it's ironic that I'm here today on a really good rainstorm day. So what I just made, not sure of how many of you exactly were here, but I got copies of card, first and second bill. The dates that we applied, our concept of actually living here was about a month difference. So apparently, there is some information that can be given to you all, and you may choose to act on it or not. My concern is, we just haven't lived here, so the sewer charges of $260 some dollars as opposed to the $196. I don't know what you can do. I did not find anything specifically on the website. I'm just asking if someone could review it. And I understand that I had that opportunity through this meeting, which timed nicely. I thought I'd wait for my second bill, which the read should probably be about tomorrow. And I'm proud to say that the grass has made it, and so I have the three new trees, and that was my Mother's Day gift to me. So I'm pretty informal, but appreciate your time. And I can be reached with that email, and I do not know what else to request other than a review. So we did not live there. Our sod came early. We didn't do moving trucks. I'm proud to say that a Honda Pilot can haul a lot, and I've made and moved everything myself because we were coming to water. That's all I have. Any questions?
No. And this is a brand-new home, right?
It is a brand-new home. Yes. My paradise was our contact person with Bigelow. I think he's part of the, he worked on that Houston development, so apparently it's three years old. I've met your city administrator, Tim. Tyler Bonbuck is my neighbor as well. I have just found a very welcome feeling here from Casson. But thank you.
Welcome to town.
We're happy to be here.
And I'll just, I'll just tell you, this is a difficult one, because the way the ordinance reads, basically, if it goes through that meter, we have to charge the sewer on it. There's nothing we can really do about that. The reason I'm asking, it's a brand-new home, is I would ask the contractor how easy it would be now, because there is an option to put a separate meter on for the outdoor water.
And Kathy-
That way it doesn't go through the meter, and it's less, it would have been less than what that first sewer bill was. So I don't know what the option is now, but just to have the conversation with them, because that sod's going to need water for the next-
Right.
-coming. So.
I appreciate finding out about that optional meter after the fact.
Yep.
I'm a critical care nurse, teacher, and everything, and sometimes we like to put pacemakers in both the top and the bottom of the heart, and I've watched that change over the years too. So I wanted to at least-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great night.
Now that this discussion's there, is there a way for new homeowners to, through the builder or through the city, to let them know that there's an option for second meters?
That's really a contractor thing. I know when we built ours back in 2013, they asked us, "Do you want to put the separate meter here or not?" So I-
And not to speak out of turn, but that's exactly what I said to Mike as well, as builders, to consider irrigation systems. That's what I had in Duncombe in the nominee, and it's by far more controllable than-
Sure.
I wish you well and have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. You too. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I just don't know how to do that. I mean, it'd be nice if we could.
Well, they really should offer the, here. But, okay. All right. Anything else for public forum? I don't have the cards. Did you have, were you here for a public forum? Nope. Okay. On to committee reports. Spence's ordinance recommendation from the July 12th PMZ meeting.
We have in front of you the changes that the Planning Commission suggested, and this is just for your information and if you have any comments. There'll be a public hearing at Planning Commission in August, and then it'll come to council on the 11th. No. Yeah.
August 11th?
Yep.
Okay.
So if you had any, they decided that a permit wouldn't be necessary, but we are making a brochure handout type thing that we can either email or hand over the counter with all of these rules on it to everybody who asks about a fence. So I don't know, Dwayne and Dan, you want to say anymore? That's about it.
Yeah, no, that's about it. We had fairly good discussion. We felt it wasn't necessary to overregulate this.
Yeah.
And it'll basically comes down to aesthetics. And I think there's, we'll see what comes out of the public hearing, but I think there's still some discussion that's going to come down the pike regarding this.
And there was, there was quite a bit of discussion over this, and different wording, different ideas to make it seem the most fair for everybody.
Yep. So this is a start.
Okay. Thank you guys for doing that. We'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting. GO Business, food truck policy permit and fee schedule amendment, G1.
What you have in your packet is the entire packet that the food truck would get, the form to fill out. There is a suggested fee. It's $25 for a one-to-three day, which we figured went over a weekend or even a long weekend, or like a baseball tournament weekend, and then there would be an annual fee. So they would get the map. They'd have to fill out the permit. They'd get the rules. There's an indemnity agreement to hold us not liable. Just looking for any comments you had or a motion to approve the policy.
Okay. And thank you for putting this together too, because it's becoming a real thing. I did have one question from somebody from the public, you know, "Why are we going to charge a fee?" Well, that's probably, you know, and I say it's a good question, you know, we don't want to fee people to death, but we have restaurants that are located in Casson and pay property taxes and participate in the system, and they sell food in town to allow mobile restaurants to come in and just participate in the city of Casson selling food with no skin in the game and then drive back out. This is their way of supporting the infrastructure and the things that are going on, which people pay for on their taxes. So I think it's very fair. If you want to bring a food truck in 12, 15, 20 times over the summer, $250, is it going to be the thing that breaks you? So.
And that three identified spots, you know, restricted to that.
Right.
So then, this saying there'll be no food trucks allowed in personal parking lots?
No, personal parking lots is, that's private.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to verify.
We don't regulate private property.
Okay. Just wanted to verify.
Right. If it's on like Plaza 57, that's their property. They pay property taxes. If they choose to use some of their parking lot for that, that's their deal. This will be on city property. And this all stems from when the food trucks, trucks first came to town, they were in the liquor store parking lot. And it was just kind of bad form on our part to allow that across the street from restaurants that had been forced to be closed for how many a month. Then we bring these mobile restaurants in, have their good day, and they just drive out of town on city property. It just didn't, that was just bad-
I just wanted to clarify this. I know we talked about it, but I just couldn't remember.
Yep.
But the $25 really is more of an administrative fee anyway to-
Yeah. Because you've got paperwork to be holding.
Right.
And we charge for a peddler's permit for the ice cream trucks and the different things that are in town, so they pay a fee for that also.
We charge more for the peddler's permits.
Right. So I'll make a motion to approve this as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks for putting that together. New Business Cemetery Budget Discussion. That's H1. Let me get that open here.
I can take this if you like, Chris.
Yeah, Nancy, if you want to start that.
And a TIF one too, if you like. So we're just bringing it forward just as part of our budget preparation. The reason we're bringing it forward now is, just a backstory, we've known for several years that this fund would be depleted to support the operations to the tune of $33,000, $40,000 a year, depending on mowing costs actually right now. So we knew this day was coming, and we're just asking for it to be a little accelerated in the event the city would like to preserve the balance in the cemetery fund for more infrastructure capital expenditures, because it's going to happen anyway. So we're asking for the cemetery operations to come into the city as part of the Parks Department. Ronnie's already the one who manages the cemetery. But come into the city Parks Department, it would affect our levy to the tune of about that $33,000 a year, and then use the remaining funds for infrastructure. As we already saw, it's not enough to cover some of the things we want to do. So we just summarized it and said the things we've had perennially on our list is to pave the road, and we give you a cost estimate in the packet, and to screen. We've heard for years that maybe we want to screen particularly the east side. Now, we're not going to talk about what those options are. I didn't know, I don't know where it came from, but I see that an additional fencing quote was included in that. Certainly, we'd love it if, if the fence was as beautiful as the road, but it doesn't, it doesn't screen anything. So could we be looking at low shrubs possibly instead of a fence? But you get the idea, because even if we screened with shrubs, it's going to get expensive. So, you know, we've got screening on the east side. We also are considering the south and the west side now, because if we're going to develop that property, we also need to do some screening. Now, the benefit of the fences, you know, safety and security issues, we don't need people going through the cemetery and intentionally or accidentally toppling anything. It's very expensive, but we also are concerned about safety first and foremost. We already have funds that we work with every year, only about $2,500, $3,500 a year, where we have somebody come in and write some of the stones, you know, list them, correct them, align them, you know, so they're upright correctly. And that alone is going to always be a cost for us. But anyway, the point is to ask if council will allow us to incorporate it into the budgeting process this year. And we think it's also good here to incorporate it. We think with some debt dropping off, I know we've got some debt coming on with some of the savings that we've had, that we can look at it, and we can certainly incorporate it into the budget at the outset, and if it doesn't work, you know, we can leave it as an enterprise fund for the additional year and a half. But again, it's coming. It's looming. It'll happen 2023 anyway.
Okay.
But also, are there any questions? I realize I've just tried to summarize what you'd already been given.
I, it's clear to me. I mean, we've been talking about this for-
Years.
Years coming on this. So it's coming into the budget anyway in the next year and a half regardless. So we may as well make it part of the budget now, and then these capital improvements can be part of our budgeting process as far as the screening fence and road. And the, you know, I've had a few people approach me about this, and very justifiably so. I was out there on Memorial Day, and boy, I tell you, it was even hard to keep your vehicle on whatever path that is, the road. It was just slimy and greasy. It's the two tire tracks. And so I can see where, you know, just for respect for our history and, you know, a lot of our, the city founders are out there, and, you know, we need to make it look decent and keep it screened and the road paves. So. So I'll make a motion to incorporate the cemetery into the general fund and allocate any remaining cemetery fund that's from 610 to the capital items going forward. So I'll make that motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Same. Thank you. Motion carries. And as far as the fencing, the projects themselves, we'll just incorporate that as part of the budget discussion going forward as far as what type of fencing, how much, how many feet, maybe it all doesn't get done in one budget cycle on the road and all that. So we'll just put that to run to get into the budget process.
Thank you. Thank you. That helps a bunch of the council too.
Good. Thank you very much. And then number two, the interfund loan resolution.
Well, that's fairly straightforward. When the discussion came up about encouraging the affordable housing in the city, no matter what site it was located at, there was discussion of TIF, and this is a way to just allow us to reimburse ourselves, because we don't know what that looks like, where it will be at, where the TIF district might be created. So it's just, by adopting the resolution, we're allowing ourselves to pay ourselves back through the creation of that TIF district. And we certainly included the high end of the cost. We did include a number in there. So.
Okay.
Hope that that at least protects what we might be doing in the future.
Any questions for Nancy on that? It makes sense. So.
Yep. I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, Nancy. Appreciate it. Administrator's report. Tim is not here, so his report is in the packet. Just to congratulate Tim and his wife Lexi on the birth of their daughter Saturday, and don't ask any more details, because the email that we got was pretty benign, and I know my wife's first question was, "What's her name?" I said, "I have no idea," and she tells us, "Well, how big was she?"
There you go.
I said, "I don't know. She was born, everything's good. That's all you need to know." So we'll be scolding Tim on protocol, and when you tell someone you had a baby, the three or four things you need to include with that. So. But congratulations to him and his family, and he's going to be taking some time off. But he is available, and he has been answering some emails and taking care of some things, so he's not gone. He's only about eight blocks away. So we'll give them a little time. But any questions on anything that he had in the packet there? One of the big things was with the first one, the legacy grant was approved with the legislative, when they passed the budget bill on June 30th or whatever date it was. So that did get approved, that $30,000 for the wall at the park. And then that'll be coming whenever they decide to distribute that.
They are going to start on the wall pretty soon too, right? Correct?
Correct. They're starting out this month, I believe, and then he's going to take some time off around the festival and the park time, and then he's going to Scotland for a while and be back in September and finish it up before the fall. So.
That's what I thought. I just- That's what I thought, I just-
Yep. So if there's no questions on that, or if you do, you can just shoot an email to Tim if you want to, and he'll get back to you. All right, on to the engineer's report.
Thank you, Mayor Council, real quick tonight, in your council packet, it's a resolution to award bid for the Northwest Trail in the 2021 Street Maintenance Project. Previous council action allows to go out for bid and approve those plans, so before you, and the resolution is to award the contract to IMES Contracting for $334,110.17. So by passing the resolution, that would authorize us to enter a contract with that contractor. There is a bid tab breakdown in there, I won't go into all the different pre-items, how this is being paid, this is through a DNR Trail Grant that received sidewalk maintenance budget item, working with Public Works on some spot repairs that they're gonna do, but there's still gonna be some money left over to pay for a fair amount of the sidewalk as part of this project, street maintenance budget that we would fund every year, and then start a part of our stormwater enterprise funds for that cleaning out of the pond in Casson Meadows, so it's kind of the breakdown here. We're generally within budget, so I think it's all gonna work out as we incorporate some Public Works projects kind of through our budget with respect to sidewalks and streets, so, and recommending the council proceed with approving the resolution and obviously answering questions you may have.
When will the work be done? Do we know that yet, by the end of the construction season?
Yeah, so we've kind of left it open.
Whatever works for them.
Yeah, I talked to the contractor, they're probably not gonna get on it right away, but did talk about some of the ins and outs of the project, so.
Okay.
It'll happen this construction season.
Perfect, that's all I needed to know. Any other questions for the engineer on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I think that was it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, yep. Personnel, resignation of full-time officer Matt Nordland from the Police Department, his letter is in the packet, we wish Matt well in his next endeavor and thank him for his service to the city of Casson through the Police Department. So I'll make the motion to accept his letter of resignation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then we have a recommendation from the police chief, there were several positions already hanging open, this created a third one, so we actually have three full-time officers. Again, this is not an add to the budget, this is just replacing people over the last, and we're really trying to get away from part-time, because the way the licensing and everything goes with part-time is difficult to keep, or even have part-time police officers anymore, so this is just to fill the positions that are empty. So he recommended James Im, Jessica Peterson, and Ryan Pacheco.
Mr. Gator Reynolds was here too, if you have any questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses, I didn't recognize, so I was asking probably, I'm like, I know that guy. Anything you'd like to add at all? No? Okay. Any questions for? No.
These were three very good candidates during the interviews.
Okay, that's right, you were on the interview, okay, thank you for doing that too. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Mel.
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And since we're on the, just the Police Department there, just something to add, probably back on my mayor's report, but during Festival in the Park on Friday night, there's gonna be an EMS appreciation evening from like 6:00 to 9:00, they're gonna have the canine demonstration, somebody from the state police, the county, the city, ambulance service are gonna be set up there with different vehicles and that type of thing, so if you're in the park that night, that'd be a pretty good thing, so.
Yeah, cool.
On to the attorney's report, we're gonna have a closed session to get an update on the Heiser litigation, so we'll close the meeting, it will not be recorded. Reopen the meeting, we will give an update and proceed. Thanks for coming.
I, because I-